Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for September 10, 2024. We will begin calling this meeting to order and we'll be preparing for closed session. Madam Clerk.
Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9B2, conference with legal counsel, pre-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Item two, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Teresa Hitchcock, Marcos Munoz, and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organization, Service Employees International Union Local 1021. Item three, pursuant to government code 54957B, consider the disability retirement of a safety employee.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on these items? Is there any public comment online?
There is no online public comment.
Thank you. We will adjourn, we will recess to closed session and return at nine o'clock for the regular scheduled board meeting. Thank you. 10, 2024. If you are able, you please rise for pledge of allegiance.
The supervisors are talking over. Will you read us this morning?
Mr. Chair, please join me in the pledge to our glad. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and liberating, just as for all.
Thank you. We will report out in closed session at the next meeting. We still have a couple items to go over, so we will be returning to closed session at the end of this public meeting. We'll begin with staff announcements.
I'm sorry, Chair Germini, I think Supervisor Follendorf is appearing remotely and just needed to make her, make a little statement.
Very well.
Sorry to interrupt.
Supervisor Follendorf, are you online?
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I wasn't sure about the audio. I'll be attending Zoom today due to medical reasons. So, yeah.
You have an advisor with you too, eh?
Yeah.
Supervisor Follendorf, thank you so much for joining us today and a beautiful little girl there with you. Congratulations from everybody.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor? All right, I'll move on to staff announcements. Do you want to read that in?
Yes. This is a time for county staff to provide updates for upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Thank you. Lisa, come on down.
Does one yet? Have you seen the Gletschel by Rollback by Agency?
Today I have a few announcements. Some of them are from the last board meeting, but the first one is that this weekend animal service and focus are going to be busy. We not only have a rabies vaccine clinic that's going to be held at Spence Feed and Supply in Angels Camp from 9:00 to 11:30 with attending veterinarian Dr. Sasha Greenlee. We asked that, it's going to be coming off the freeway there, so we asked that everybody be careful during that. It's only a rabies clinic, so that will be the last clinic for rabies only this year. Our next clinic will be here, held in San Andreas on October 12th, and that will be a rabies and microchip clinic as well. I want to talk, revisit our voucher program that we have for the spay and neuter with the Calaveras Humane Society. We were awarded $175,000 in grant funds from California for all animals. That was funding that was designated by our governor for all animal shelters throughout California, and it's administered by the UC Davis Corbett Shelter Medicine Program. And today, I can report that we have been successful in issuing 101 vouchers, so that's awesome. And the reason why this is so important is just last week, on Thursday, we had eight puppies that were surrendered onto our shelter at four o'clock in the afternoon. So, we were able to get those puppies out to a shelter and to another rescue. And it, it happens all the time. The very next day, we got in four additional puppies. So, it's real important. I can't express how important it is for our community to consider spay and neuter their animals. The voucher program is great. The vouchers will provide the following discounts on spay and neuter surgeries at all participating veterinarians, veterinarians in Calaveras County. Female dogs, $250 off. Male dogs, $175 off. Female cats, $175 off. Male cats, $125 off. And the vouchers will also provide $20 towards a rabies vaccine and $25 towards a microchip, which is also real important because it helps get our lost animals home. So, who qualifies? All Calaveras residents. How does it work? First, you must make an appointment for your pet surgery. Most veterinarians in Calaveras, Tuolumne, Amador, and other counties are participating. Excuse me, my allergies are acting up. Once you make an appointment, you can call us, CCAS at 209-754-6509, or Calaveras Humane Society at 209-736-9417. Again, we have a great collaboration with our Calaveras Humane Society, so we're real happy to be working this project with them. We want to thank them and a big shout out to them as well and their staff. Thank you, DeeDee. Our next successful event that we are looking forward to is going to be the adoption event. It's going to be held at the, this weekend, Saturday, at the Wild and Scenic Film Festival in Angels Camp at the Bret Hart Theater. So, please come by and visit our CCAS staff. I wanted to touch on our stickers and I want to say thank you to Michael McGonig for providing our stickers. This is our 55 and five program for animal services. Basically, it's a discount adoption. If you're 55 years old, you get, and you adopt a pet that's five years or older, it's only $5. We'll come down and see him, see, look, see you. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Are there other staff announcements in the room? Are there any online?
We have none online.
All right. We're going to move on to recognitions and acknowledgements.
Item four, proclamation, behavioral health, adopt a proclamation declaring September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Calaveras County.
Thank you. I'll pass the gavel to Supervisor Hubbard.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which helps promote awareness and resources around suicide prevention, and whereas this is the time to raise awareness of this stigmatized, often taboo topic, we use this month to shift public perception, spread hope, and share vital information to people affected by suicide. And whereas the county's goal is to ensure that individuals, friends, and families have access to the resources they need to discuss suicide prevention and to seek help. And whereas every death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire community. And whereas Calaveras County Health and Human Services Agency Behavioral Health Division is committed to raising awareness, providing education, and training on suicide prevention, and helping to reduce the stigma associated with suicide and attempted suicide. Whereas, the Behavioral Health Division intends to conduct suicide prevention training in September that teach how to help others and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. I also would like to add and thank our county clerk Stacy for giving me the information that you can call, text, or chat 988 on your smartphone, or dial 800-273-TALK, which is 8255, or call your local crisis hotline if you or a loved one would like to speak to somebody at 209-754-3239, or 800-499-3030. And with that, I'll put it towards any public comment.
Good morning. Meili Johnson, I'm the Deputy Director of Social Services and the Intern Behavioral Health Director. On behalf of Calaveras County Behavioral Health, September serves as a reminder that we will, all play a crucial role in recognizing the signs of distress, providing support to those in need. By fostering open conversations, reducing stigma, and promoting mental health resources, we can create a more supportive environment for everyone in the community. If you or someone you know is struggling, reach out to local resources, reaching out to local resources can make a significant difference. Calaveras County Behavioral Health is dedicated to being a resource and a lifeline for our community, ensuring that help is available when needed.
Sir?
Do.
Good morning, members of the board, CEO Hitchcock, county staff, and members of the public, Michael McGonig, Assistant Director of Health and Human Services. I did write some notes this morning, so if they don't make sense, I'm not a morning person. But I do want to take a brief moment to acknowledge the dedicated staff that are here today from Behavioral Health of Health and Human Services. They've been very instrumental in providing services and support to those in need. I also want to take an opportunity to encourage members of the community to share their stories of resilience and recovery. The courage and strength told in our stories can inspire others who may be struggling. By coming forward, you help to break that stigma associated with mental health and reminding us that we are not alone. By promoting mental health awareness and education, we can empower individuals to recognize the warning signs of suicide and reach out for help. It is through these collective efforts of the Behavioral Health Team, the rest of Health and Human Services, the community, including those who are in this very room, that we can create a place where individuals feel safe and supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Do we have anybody online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do a roll call.
Do a roll call now. Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Thank you. So, all five, a five oh vote in favor.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, on this 10th day of September 2024, do hereby declare September as Suicide Prevention Month.
Michael, you want to come here for a?
Two weeks.
He's mad, dude.
It's on him.
I, Church.
No, do you want to, not a second with you.
Sorry.
Let him on.
She's sorry, what did I miss?
I'm losing Chris.
Well, give on some, here, how first?
No.
He's upset.
That was.
See, we have a little, 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 a
Nonmaterial fact to a consent agenda item. You're on the record stating that was four years ago. You do know that Supervisor Folendorf has formally been under state investigation by the FPPC's Enforcement Division since July 16, 2024 for allegations of violations of the Political Reform Act for all years between 2020 and 2024, with an additional allegation since having been added to case number 2024-00713, and a third allegation in process. Now, let's talk about your FPPC form Supervisor Stopper. On May 10, 2019, your Campaign Committee Stopper for Supervisor District 5, 2018, with you as treasurer, received this official warning letter from the FPPC concerning your violation of the Campaign Disclosure Provisions of the Political Reform Act. You failed to file your legally required semi-annual campaign form by the deadline. The FPPC explicitly warned you in writing. Failure to comply with the provisions of the Act in the future will result in monetary penalties up to $5,000 for each violation, and the information in this matter will be retained and may be considered should an enforcement action become necessary based on newly discovered information or future conduct. No sooner were you warned of future monetary penalties of up to $5,000 per violation, you immediately committed the exact same violation in the very next semi-annual period and allegedly in subsequent periods. Additionally, you allegedly did not file Form 410-T and 460-T to terminate your 2018 Campaign Committee, nor file Form 470 Office Holder and Candidate Campaign Statement Short Form for 2023. You failed to timely file Form 497s for two labor union campaign contributions to your 2018 campaign. Supervisor Stopper, your FPPC complaint number is 0909-2024-02978. My name is Christopher Bettner, publisher of Calaveras2024Election.com. Thank you.
Are there other public comments in the room? Are there any online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Are there any Board members that would like to pull an item? Other items on board? Staff? Public? Are there any items you would like to pull? Are there any online?
We have no online requests.
Thank you. With the exception of item 21, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli, or second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Aye.
District 3?
Aye.
District 4?
Aye.
District 5?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes a five-vote vote of the Board.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 21.
Item 21, Agreement. Public Works authorized the Board Chair to execute an agreement with Proper Pruning Services, Inc., an amount not to exceed $150,000 for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffenelli, you have questions?
Thank you. Yeah, I do. And this program's been going on for quite some time, and we were getting state funds for it. Is that still the case here? It says no impact to County General Fund, but it just says it's within your budget. It doesn't say where the money's coming from.
That would be coming from the road funds. These trees are ones that are within the right-of-way. They have a danger of impacting the traveling area, so they're covered by our road maintenance fund.
Okay. That's the only question I had, I want to make sure.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? All right, well, bring it back to the Board. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
By Supervisor Hubbard, second by Supervisor Toffenelli. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
District 1?
Aye.
District 2?
Aye.
District 3?
Aye.
District 4?
Aye.
And District 5?
Aye.
It passes a 5-oh vote of the Board.
Thank you. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Item 23.
Item 23, Resolution. Human Resources adopt a resolution appointing Jessie Sprague to the position of county librarian effective September 21, 2024.
Judy?
Good morning, Chair Guerminde, members of the Board. I am very happy to bring a resolution before you today, appointing a new county librarian, Jessie Sprague. We're very happy to get her from Shasta County. She has a great deal of experience, energy, and we understand that she gets things done. So, we are very happy to have her join Calaveras County effective the 23rd.
Excellent. Jessie, do you want to introduce yourself?
Good morning. My name is Jessie Sprague. I've been a librarian for about 10 years. Little bit about myself, I'm particularly passionate about children's services. I consider storytimes to be a cornerstone of any county's literacy services and any library's offerings. I'm also passionate about collection maintenance and readers advisory. If you see me in the library, please ask me for a book suggestion. I love to give them. So, I am happy to be coming on board. I've taken a look at a couple of the libraries, and I think they're lovely. I know I am feeling very large shoes, and I'll probably have a little bit of a learning curve, so I hope you're patient with me while I try to take on what I understand was a very, very well-run library system by the previous director. So, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to starting.
Thank you very much, Jessie. And I think on behalf of the Board, we're very excited. This Board loves their library.
Thank you.
So, I think we've proven that over time. So, welcome. Very well. Is there any public comment? Any public comment on this item? Any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
All right. I'll bring it back to the Board.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Stopper, second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
District 1?
Aye.
District 2?
Aye.
District 3?
Aye.
District 4?
Aye.
District 5?
Aye.
It passes a 5-vote vote of the Board.
Welcome aboard, Jessie.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, we'll move on to item 24.
Item 24, Agreement. Public Works authorized the interim Director of Public Works to execute contract change order 60-01 to Contract 12002103 with Suckit Construction LLC in the amount of $2,100,000.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, glad to be back. No, I went through this. I'm not wrong. Yeah, no, last Board meeting, I went through this at length, the presentation. I'll just summarize to say that due to the advent of cultural sensitive areas that were found on the wagon trail alignment, we had to go from a fixed fee program to a timing material program to deal with the dirt in these assigned areas. And that's mainly on either side of what we call the wall area now, and we also have, you know, Hunt Road and also Full Station, you know, road areas that are involved in this change order. It contemplated, the change order presented at your last meeting contemplated moving approximately 90,000 cubic yards. It was an estimate at $855,000, which we learned, you know, soon, well, actually, not soon enough, was woefully underestimated. The Board properly wanted answers as to, you know, why that wasn't detected sooner, and that's because the billings were not coming forth from the contractor. And by the time our construction management team started to prepare estimates on each of these things on a day-by-day basis, it had got well past that 855,000 estimate. And then, anyway, it goes on and talks about how much more roadway excavation is needed. You know, what is the revised total cost of the roadway excavation contemplated in this change order? There's just under $2 million for work performed between mid-March and July 20. We also estimated approximately $1.9 million for work to be performed between now and the end of the project for a total of approximately $3.9 million. The net increase for all of that combined would be about $3.1 million. What we recommended at the last meeting was to address the cost that would, that's already had been incurred at that point, and then provide enough to get us through the end of this month. And that was recommended, the supplement that was recommended was an additional $2.1 million. By way of update, at this point, we've moved approximately 70,000 cubic yards. I guess that 90. There's been a total estimated cost of close to $3.1 million, you know, million dollars, and based on calculations provided by our project manager, we have about $218,000 left if this, that's supplement number one, if it's approved today. And again, we're talking about something that we're catching up, catching up to. I'll just put a caveat that the numbers that I just shared is missing one day, August 29. Those costs have been running anywhere from as low as $17,000 a day to as high as $43,000 a day. I don't know, as I stand here before you, how much that day costs us. I'll have that, you know, no doubt by the next time I meet with you folks. So, I'm here today again asking that you approve the supplement number one, and we'll stay to the script that I recommended last time, that I would come back at your next Board meeting and ask for some additional funding. As I stand here today, I'd like to, I don't know what I would ask, we'll develop the best number that we can and bring that to you at your next meeting. The idea would be to cover any cost, you know, if we have anything that was not covered by supplement number one, from the end of this month, we'd carry that on until the end of the construction season. So, I will get with the engineers, get the best estimate, and would come back at your next meeting. So, that's the general game plan. So, I'm asking that you go ahead and approve this change order 60-01, authorizing me to sign, and I would be back at your next meeting asking for supplement two, which should be the last of it for this construction season. That's the intention. Are there any questions?
Questions from the Board? Supervisor Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last meeting, we had this item up, and I asked several questions, and one of the questions was, there's no work being done on either the east side or the west side to meet up, so we meet up and everything's constructed until we get to the wall. Nobody's working on either one of those sections. Is that still correct?
There's a little bit that has been done on the Appaloosa side, very little on Hunt side.
So, primarily, all the work's being done on this change order, through this change order that Suckit is doing.
Yeah.
And then, it was brought up about how we were being charged for equipment setting not being used. And so, the change order specifically states rates for rental equipment cover such time equipment is actually used, and no allowance will be made for idle time. So, when this invoice comes in and we start paying this invoice out, we need to make sure we're not, because I'm going down to your other, your summary of estimated road excavations, and it has other amounts, and we discussed that those other amounts were for equipment setting. So, we need to verify that we're not paying for any of this equipment setting while they're working on the change order.
Absolutely. And that, again, these are, based on the estimates, you're correct, there is a column in there for idle time, and before anything, whatever be paid, we'd have an actual billing, and we'll make sure if idle time is not appropriate, given what you're reading in there, we'll make sure that's not paid for that. We won't pay for idle time.
It's about $140,000, $150,000 that they're asking for, so that's a significant amount of money.
Absolutely.
So, are we, so we're not, any of that small amount of work that's being done on Hunt side, a little bit on the east side, a little bit on the west side, are they transferring those costs for idle equipment? Because that's not part of the change order?
You know, I have not seen the most recent dailies on this thing, so I don't know if they are or not. I'm sure there is some idle time that's probably in those work estimates that we prepare, but I have not seen those personally.
Okay, well, that gets back to what I was saying, that we need to have them tell Suckit to finish up the east and west up to the wall. So, then they're using the equipment, and we're not paying for it to set idle. Otherwise, we're paying for it to set idle until next year, when they come in and want to start finishing up the roadway. I'm trying to eliminate some costs here, and if they need to do the construction, instead of we paying for, again, idle equipment.
You know, one of the things that, you know, since we last met, we know a little bit more about is where the cut and the fills are, and we know that there's around 20,000 cubic yards that, at minimum, that we need to move, that's excess, needs to go off the site. If we can figure out how to do that in the least costly way possible, now is the time to get that work, you know, done. On the other material, though, we've become dirt bound, that we don't, if we try to excavate some of that stuff, for example, Hunt has a lot that needs to be excavated yet. If we move it right now, we don't have a home to put it, because a lot of that is going to go right where the wall operation is going on right now. So, we don't want to cut that, you know, move it, let it set, you know, for a season, and then move it again. It'll be most costly, more costly to do it in two steps. So, that's part of what we're running up against, is we have to, you know, to do it efficiently, we just want to, you know, literally excavate once, move it once, and not do it twice. That's part of what's happening.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Other questions in the Board? Any public comments? Any online comments?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. Is there a motion? I'll move. Should be, uh, moved by Supervisor Folendorf, second by Supervisor Hubbard. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
District 1?
You can't start with District 5 this time.
District 2?
No.
District 3?
Aye.
District 4?
Aye.
District 5?
No.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break and let us set up our budget. Madam Clerk, is that?
Yes, we're back.
All right, we'll move on to item 25.
Item 25, Action Item. Administrative Office. One, conduct the fiscal year 2024-25 county recommended budget hearings. Two, receive a presentation. And three, direct staff to return on September 24, 2024 with the county budget resolutions.
Marcus Munoz?
Good morning, Chair, members of the Board. I'm Marcus Munoz, Assistant CEO, and today I have with me Denise Hubner, Deputy CEO. Today, we're here for the fiscal year 2024 recommended budget hearings. All right, so to start off, we're going to kick it off with just a wrap-up of 23-24 and where we ended up revenue-wise, and then we will jump into the budget request, essentially our numbers for our all-funds summary, our operating, and our general fund. And then, we will go into what has changed since I was last here in June, and then we'll follow that up with some things we're looking for direction on. So, just some quick terms. An enterprise fund, that is a fund that I'm referring to, such as the airport, that is fee-funded. Many counties, the building fund or integrated waste could also be considered enterprise funds. I'm going to speak to capital funds. Capital funds are those that are for the animal shelter or the DA building, or there's those projects, but also Rhodes has a capital fund as well. And then, we have special revenue funds. Those are funds, the resources are restricted for certain use, so HHSA is considered a special revenue fund. So, any of those that cannot be used for other purposes and have a specific purpose, those are considered special revenue funds. We also have the general fund, and this is our general operating funds, and these are accounts for all of our financial resources that are not in another fund. So, you'll find the sheriff in that unit, you find admin or assessor or auditor and so forth. All right, so in the end, fiscal year 23-24, we closed out the year with a final fund balance of $10.5 million. From that, our revenues, our sales tax came in down approximately 4.8% compared to 22-23, which is about $240,000 down. Our TOT was relatively flat. It was just a smidge over what the year before was at $56,000. And then, our secured property tax did come in 6.8% above what our actuals were the year before, and that is approximately $1 million. Our excise tax was down 19.9% compared to 22-23, so that is down $725,000. These numbers are compared to actuals and not to budget, so although you see our excise tax was down, we did not budget anywhere near our actuals, so we only came in slightly below what we budgeted for the year. So, here's another way to look at it, a bar graph for our sales tax. So, you see in fiscal year 21-22, we were right at $5 million. 22-23 was virtually the same, at just above $5 million. We did drop in 23-24 to $4.8 million, and in this year's budget, we have $4.9 million budgeted. When it comes to TOT, our high year, or in 21-22, we were at $2.7 million with a slight drop the year after at $2.68 million, and then we jumped back up in 23-24 to $2.74 million. This year, we have a budget at $2.65 million. As one thing we have to keep an eye on is TOT tends to go the way the economy does, so we are definitely keeping an eye on TOT to make sure that we hit that $2.65 number. And then, our property tax. So, our property tax in 21-22 was $13.9 million. We did see an increase to $15.3 in 22-23, and then, again, in 23-24, we ended at $16.3 million. For this year, we are looking at $16.6 million. And here's the excise tax, 21-22, we had $3.5 million and saw a small increase to $3.6 million, before dropping last year to around $2.9 million. We do have it budgeted for the year at $2.8 million. And finally, this slide shows all of our general revenue, so this is discretionary revenue the Board has control over, with the exception, there's one caveat to Prop 172, it does have a rule that we can only use it for public safety purposes. But when looking at these numbers, in 21-22, we were just under that $40 million mark, and then we went up to $42.8 million, followed by $43.8 million, and so this year, we are budgeting at $43.35 million. So, just a few more numbers overall, compared to last year, a year ago at this time, our budget is at, for all funds, so this is everything that's in...
I wonder if...
Yes, absolutely.
...we did not open a public hearing.
Yeah, which then...
Can you start your microphone? I did not open a public hearing, so we are now, oh, we are in a public...
Carrie.
Sorry.
Perfect, no problem. The, so a year ago, at this time, we had $356 million budgeted. We have seen an increase in 24-25 to 391. Again, this is for all of our coffers, and so that is an increase of 9%. And I will get more into that, what's causing that increase, in a couple of slides here. Another way to look at the 391 million that we have budgeted is a pie graph, and this shows where our money is going. When we pare that down just to our operating funds, I think I went the wrong direction. When we pare that down just to our operating funds, so we take out all of the special revenue funds that we have set money aside for specific purposes, we get our operating funds, and we show a year ago, we were at $240 million. Now, we are budgeted at $267 million, which is that increase of 10%. And then, again, another way to look at our operating funds from a pie chart. All right, and our general fund, so breaking that one more, one more level down to what the Board has control over, we see last year, we were at 81, just under $81.1 million. This year, we are at $82.4 million, an increase of 1.64%. And again, a pie chart to show what that looks like and where the money is going. All right, and then, looking at it from a revenue standpoint, a year ago, we had budgeted $72.5 million. This year, we are just under that $72 million, so we are budgeting this year's budget at almost a negative 1% decrease. And that's a look at our revenue. So, looking at the adjustments and what is causing that big increase from what we budgeted last year to this year, so our overall budget is $391 million, that is all funds. From what was presented in June, that is an increase of $29.3 million, or 8.1% compared to what we presented here in June. When we look at our operating funds, that's $273 million, or an increase of $27 million over what was presented in June, and so that's 11.1% up. So, what is causing that? So, we have an increase of $3.9 million to services and supplies, $19.5 million to our capital funds, and $7.5 million in an increase to contingencies. So, that is the majority of those differences that is occurring. The $19 million to increase to capital, and we'll go more into that in a little bit, is primarily to the wagon trail project, as we have budgeted the full amount in this budget. I believe 18.85 of that is specific to that project. Contingencies, as the final books closed, we adjusted all of our contingency projections to be more, or to be what they are based on the final closing of the books, and so that brought in $7.5 million to our contingencies lines, which are budgeted as an expenditure, and that's why it makes our amount grow. And then, we have $3.9 million increase to services and supplies. A couple of these are, for example, we have a $500,000 grant, lot of grant for broadband, and so we had to budget the expenditure as well as the revenue to help into our budget in order to make sure we pay those expenditures. But that, again, was offset by revenue. We also have, and we'll go into more detail, a $1.4 million adjustment into the jail budget, and that is because of, we did not... budget, and that is because of, we did not receive, that's based on the JBCT beds, we have 18 beds, we were invoiced for 10 beds throughout the year, and so we have to true up that difference. We did budget it for last year, however, it was not paid in last year, so we had to move the expense to this year's budget. And so, and then our general fund budget is down about 1.2 million from what we presented in June, and that's a difference of about 1.4%. So what changed in this budget? So from June, our budget was reworked in the building department in its entirety, and now the budget is balanced. The building department is not looking for a general fund draw. As you remember, during mid-year and during our CEO recommended budget, we were working through that budget, as we were having difficulty finishing that budget up. The good news is, we did end up closing the books in June on that budget, and building did not end up needing a draw from the general fund. Insurance, we did have an increase in our general liability insurance of $528,000, and so this was a big increase over what was presented in June. As I just spoke to in the jail budget, the $1.45 million is rebudgeted in this year's budget, as we are working out with the vendor, the difference in that bed count and getting those billings straightened out. IWM, we'll see a large increase in IWM as their request is to add a mechanic and also the related equipment to the mechanic. In speaking with IWM, an analysis was done to see what the cost of that was versus what they are outsourcing right now. It was, it was determined to bring it in-house, what essentially in this first year's budget net out, and then in future budgets, it would ultimately create a savings going forward. We did move some large grants, the PLHA and the LEAP grant, we initially were budgeting into planning in some special revenues, but we did move that to the HHSA budget, so you'll see some movement associated with those grants. And then, as I spoke to earlier, $475,000 for the Lotta grant was budgeted in the economic development budget, and that works as a, essentially a pass-through to our vendor, Golden State Connect Authority for the work we are doing on broadband. And then finally, in public works, we have that $18.8 million added for the wagon trail project. So in order to offset those expense, the remaining RIN funding was budgeted towards the wagon trail project, which is $10.25 million. Also, there was an increase of $3 million in SB1 funds and $5.6 million in shop funding. So where does that put us on our structural deficit? As of right now, our expenses are $82.4 million. We have budgeted contingencies of $1.8 million. In order to maintain our board-approved policy of 2% of reserves, we need to make a transfer of $53,000 to reserves. We are also requesting to move money into a 27th payroll account of $1 million, and that would be for the year 2728, when the county will experience a 27th payroll, which is estimated to be about $2 million, and so that's why we're making that request. And then a transfer to county capital of about $5.3 million. I do want to point out, though, yes, it says a transfer to $5.3 million, however, because of those jail transfers, $1.4 million is scheduled in this budget to go right back out to cover. So since we didn't have the expense, it inflated our transfer by 1.4, we're moving it right back out to cover those expenditures. So our total net expenditures are $74.3 million. When you compare that to our revenue at 71, sorry, it's blocked on my screen, so 71.9 million, that gives us a structural deficit of just under $2.3 million. So this is what our reserve looks like right now. We have the $5.5 million currently in there with a transfer scheduled of $53,000 to give us a balance of just under $5.6 million. And I believe I said that backwards, the reserve is 8% of general revenues, our contingency is 2%. I do have some items that I am looking for directions, requests that are here at final budget, and these are what are different since we presented in June. So I have two new positions requests. We have a position in behavioral health for a senior department analyst, as well as the integrated waste mechanic that I was speaking to earlier. We do have a few reclassifications in public health, health education specialist to a program coordinator, and that position is currently underfilled with a program coordinator. We have a planner three to a planner two, which is also currently underfilled with the planner two. And then we have a vacant deputy director that we're looking to reclass to a clinical services manager. And the reason for this is currently, there are two HHSA deputy directors in behavioral health. One acts as the mental health director, and then there's been another one there that is vacant and has been vacant for a couple of years now. And so they're trying to clean up the structure there and utilize that position more as the clinical services manager. And that second one, the one that's been vacant, is the one they're looking to, to reclassify. And then there's a couple of title changes. In the sheriff's office, they wanted to change the 911 call taker to a call taker. And then in the HHSA behavioral health division, the supervising substance use disorder, they just want to update the job description a little bit. And then the final request is just for some administrative cleanup. There is a position control number of 8390 that's looking to be changed to 8395. Outside of those, there are a couple of CIP requests, and these are a change in budget amount. We are looking for the assessor's office. We had that report, we spoke about it in June on asbestos. We did add some money in at this, at that time, but this, this $25,000 also covers the increase in the workload that it caused on the other contractors as well. And then the government center electrical, we are looking to reduce the appropriations by $150,000. I do want to point out, the project is not $150,000 less, the project is still the same cost. We just happened to pay that in last year, and the appropriations are not needed in this year. And then we have the building e-bathrooms. We did all the architectural and engineering on it. When the engineer's estimate came back, the bathrooms are looking like they are going to be $150,000 more than we had budgeted, and so we are asking for that request to be added in the budget before we go out to bid.
Marcos.
Yes.
How many bathrooms total?
There are, there's a men's bathroom and a women's bathroom. I, I'm not 100% sure on how many fixtures are in each bathroom, so.
Oh, okay. How much did we, how much did we allocate to that first? Since this is an addition.
Yep, we added $300,000. That was in our budget. There is additional work that's being done. We did have a leak in the bathroom, which created mold in the wall, so one of two things happens, we have to, we have to get in there and do it, and since we were already opening up walls, we thought that's why we should go ahead and remodel the bathrooms. If this is not approved, we would focus on taking care of that area, which will also involve opening up walls, so.
You have to understand our concern until it's almost half a million dollars to the bathrooms.
It is.
I don't get it. Sorry.
I'd love to see that.
I, I'd love to see the contractors work just so I could go over. I don't need a micromanage jobs like this, but I would love to see it. Yeah, the contract and what works being done. Because I, I kind of, did this work for a long time, and, I don't know, doesn't make sense.
So, and part of that work is, is making them ADA accessible currently, they are not, that is, the request is based off of the engineer's estimate, so after the architect put all the plans together, it goes out to an estimator, and that's what they came back with. We have not put that project out to bid yet. Another option, if we don't add it now, we can go out to bid and bring that increase at the time that we bring the lowest bid, so. And then finally, the railroad flat community center beam work, we are looking to redo that. We did go out for bid on that one. The money we had set aside, we thought was enough, but the, the bid did come back at a higher amount, and that increase was an additional $57,000. Outside of those, we do have some cleanup on the CIP list that we are, we have four of them that were moved out of the CIP into the IT budget, that's the sheriff's firewall, the server storage, the voice servers, the camera, NVR. After looking at those projects, it was determined that they fall under more of a fixed asset than a capital improvement project, and so we relocated those to the IT budget. And vice versa, there was a hot water boiler project that was in the sheriff's budget that, when looking at it, it fit more the definition of a CIP, and so we moved it into the CIP budget. Those appropriations were approved in June, this is more just moving those projects to the proper place. And the capital asset requests are primarily related to the mechanic. So the first five there are related to the mechanic, that's an AC recovery system, a heavy equipment lifts, service truck with crane, a steam cleaner, and a wire feed welder. Those ones, in addition to the cost of the mechanic, when the analysis was done, those would net out for integrated waste this year. With next year, we would start to see a savings because we're not buying all the equipment at once. And then finally, integrated waste is also looking for some wind screens for up there at the landfill in order to keep the trash at the landfill. And a couple of other capital assets, we have some rollovers, so what we were hoping to get completed in 2324 that we did weren't able to, in the sheriff's dispatch unit, we have a teleosoft module, and then we have in the sheriff marine safety, we have the scan sonar device. We weren't able to get them in and paid for in last year's budget, so we are relocating them to this year's budget. And then we have a change in cost on two items. We have the, the patrol room projector, an increase of $6,000, it went from 10 to $16,000. And then we have the water truck. When we went to go order that, there is a difference in cost. It went from 340, it went from 330 to 347, which is, I said that wrong, three, it went up $14,000 from when we tried to place the order from June. Victim witness, we did delete one out from the victim witness budget, and that was the RV rap. And then I just want to speak to archives, as this was a topic in June. We did apply for a grant, it was looking promising, and then the state budget had their issues, and so the state is not funding anybody on those, on that one particular grant. We did move forward with an assessment report of the building in order to get a recommendation. The report does recommend repairing the existing damage and mitigating potential for additional damage. So they listed three priorities when it came to the archives building. Priority one is focusing on the items that require immediate attention to mitigate or even repair the current deterioration of the building. Their recommendation is for this to be completed within the next one to three years. The estimated cost of that is $111,000. So I do want to point out, when they looked at it, the roof has been redone, the, an issue of the water penetration was coming from the drains, so that was addressed. So right now, they don't have any water intrusion, and so that's why the recommendation is over the next one to three years to do a permanent fix on this building. And so that is the main priority that this report spells out. The second priority is to identify for other repairs that aren't an immediate concern but still need to be addressed in order to increase the longevity of the building. That's recommended to be completed over the next three to eight years. That has a cost of $185,000. And then finally, they add priority three, which is not identif, they're not recommending that it be done right away, but they are saying it would be nice to have. So for example, that is recommending to updating the bathrooms to be ADA compliant. And that has a cost of $44,000. So that is the three related to the archives. Again, priority one, going back, is estimated at $111,000, and that's recommended in the next year to three years to address that in order to stop the damage that is occurring. And then priority two is at $185,000, and that will ultimately increase the longevity of the building. And three is, they're saying optional, and that is to make our bathrooms in that area Additional item I'm looking for direction on is, just going back with the archives, that is not in the budget at this time, so if the board would like to see any of that added to the budget, we would need direction on that. And so we can, direction can be as simple as continue to look for grants and explore that option and bring it back at recommended budget, or we can add it in if the board would like to. Yes.
That building, half of it was the grand jury's.
Yes.
Building. Did they move into that, stretch out, move into that building, or is there anybody occupying that part of the building?
The grand jury moved out of that building, so the grand jury is no longer in there.
Yes.
I know the, the archives wanted to move into that area, I'm not sure if they have. Part of the grant was to expand into there and make that a usable space.
So the repairs cost for priority one has nothing to do with that part of the building?
It does not.
It was the main.
Correct, yes.
On the street there, okay.
Emmy. Marcos, if I could follow up. If we decided to fund this, the funds would come out of?
It would come out of our capital account that we currently have funds in. Additionally, we're looking for direction on the TOT fire true-up. We had budgeted $612,500 for fire this year, and that was based off of a budget of $2.45 million. The amount came in at 2.74, so significantly higher than the 2.45 million we budgeted. So in order to make it an even 25%, it would need an additional amount of $72,731 going to our fire districts. So we could keep it as what was budgeted, or we can increase the amount to reflect 25%, which is that additional $72,000 for the, in this upcoming year, 2425.
Marcos, the source of those funds would be TOT, where's the credit in that?
Yep, so we are, the source would be our TOT fund. So because we came in higher, our TOT account has a, a balance of it of about $290,000, and so the 72 would come out of there. Of course, the board can give direction on what to do with the remaining. We have budgeted in contingencies, just because TOT tends to move with the economy, and so if we come in lower, we want to have something there to still make everyone whole. And just some highlights, there are some, there's still economic uncertainty going on. We see inflation, volatility in the market, the state definitely is still having their issues. We continue to monitor and reevaluate to make sure everything is coming in as we, how we projected. We do continue to have a structural deficit. We have implemented the class and comp. We do, because of the timing of when our last bargaining unit was approved versus when we put out the budget, we do have some adjustments to make, and they will be in at mid-year. And then we also have our general fund reserve and contingencies are at the policy or above the policy minimums. So those are the highlights of this budget. I do want to give some acknowledgements to the board of supervisors, thank you for the support in this process, as well as our auditor, controller, IT, our admin staff, human resources, as well as our departments, our department heads and our fiscal staff, everybody played a major role, and big kudos to everyone who helped out on this budget.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. We will, we have two items that we need to, questions we need to answer for you, if I'm correct, and then questions from the board. So let's start with questions from the board, and maybe it'll resolve some of your questions. You remember? Supervisor Stoppard?
I made a request prior to June to see the expenditures and total costs on the SB 1 capital improvement projects. I laid out how I would like to see them, and I have yet to see that information provided to me to this day. It's been months. So I would like that to happen. I have other things in here, but honestly, overall, I want to thank everyone from every department and administration. You know, this is done really well. And I mean, beyond a few small things, especially that's.
Thank you, Guy.
I appreciate all the work that every one of you do. So thank you.
And let's see, any other questions? Let's see if we can answer some questions from Marcus. First question he had on there was, do we want to take money from the capital improvement funds and direct them towards the archives? Would you have, was the number, Marcus?
For priority one, it's listed estimated at $111,188.
An $12,000.
Could I ask, thank you, Chair. Will that help with phase two with grants if we start the work ourselves?
Yes, we will still have the report. We can still use the report in applying for grants. We would just be applying for phase two and phase three and expanding the archives into that adjoining area when it comes to grants.
I think it's hugely important that we save this building, and we do it as quickly as possible. I do think how a society treats its history says a lot about who you are. And there's a tremendous amount of history in that building that needs to be preserved.
All right, let's go around the horn. Who wants to put that in here?
Absolutely. All right.
I agree. Supervisor Follendorf, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, put it in. Second question was the TOT fire tru-. You want to chew up?
Can you put that back a few minutes? It would be $72,731.
Correct, yes.
Gary?
Yes, I'm going to say.
Supervisor Follendorf? Supervisor Follendorf, do you have any comments or thoughts on this? I don't think she can agree. I agree. So let's, yes, true up.
I mean, yes, yes.
Yes. All right. Other questions? I've got one quick question.
Yes.
If I may, unless there's other questions on the board. We're putting in a mechanic shop sheriff's office. He's in 443. And we're putting a new mechanic down in IWM. Mechanics are really hard to find, especially good ones. Is there coordination between our Public Works yard, the sheriff's office and IWM to make sure we're being efficient in how we spread our resources?
Yeah, so IWM has coordinated with Public Works on this transition. They've worked with them on the analysis. The sheriff also has currently someone stationed over at Public Works. I am not sure, though, about IWM and the sheriff, if the coordination has happened there, but we can definitely make sure that happens.
And it just seems like, I mean, you've got a good mechanic there, worth their weight in gold.
Yes.
All right, other questions from the board?
Just a comment to that, Luke, we don't have enough gold. I mean, not when it comes to our money, but that when it comes to our mechanics. And I mean, the guys over from Public Works helping everyone else have been spread thin. And this will be beneficial to the county as a whole to have more in, if we find that. So let's take.
And as the economy changes, there might be more opportunities for good acts.
If you don't mind, Supervisor or Chair, I left a couple of things out I should have included with my presentation. We do have a couple of technical adjustments we have to make. Just things that happened after the books closed that we have to address. For example, there was a $93 charge that we have to fix. And a, and then a couple of non-sufficient funds checks that came in after it closed that we missed between the closing and putting this budget together. There's a total of five, and so we are going to make those adjustments also, if the board's okay with it, when we bring it back.
Aggregate?
We have a 1429 adjustment due to non-sufficient funds, and that was for the general fund. Those were checks that ended up bouncing, and those fees are what we're dealing with. We had a $14,900 check fraud issue that happened that we had to correct and work through. And then for account 1170 was a $292 non-sufficient fund. And then one was just, we put it in the wrong column, and that was a reserve set aside column versus a contingency column. That was $400,000, but it was just the placement of the dollar that was messed up, so. Didn't affect the bottom line.
This is public hearing. Is there any public that would like to address us? Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Right, this is a, this is a hearing to direct staff.
Supervisor?
We have, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary.
We have IWM that we need to decide on, plus some personnel changes. We have to give direction on still, so.
Okay. I did get that one on my list.
So the personnel changes are in the budget, and so if the board directs otherwise, we'll pull them out if they're not for them.
Is there anybody you would like to pull them out or change any of those?
We just, I've been doing so well all day, about the money. Always think I've done right.
You know, just questions on like the deputy director for HSA reclassification. That probably comes with a job description change and requirement change on the position. I'm just curious what those are. Thank you, Judy.
So I'm working with, we are doing an org review currently with Evergreen. And so we're talking with them with their, looking at the structure of behavioral health. There needs to be, we have strong administration there. We do need to have strong clinical management. And so with this position that has been vacant for several years, we can make that position over clinical services and provide the assistance. And so, yes, we would be bringing back a job description.
Okay, so this isn't final at this time, but at that time, we had approved the job description, everything else.
Yes, yes, it would be brought back.
Okay, and this is preloaded based on the Evergreen study that's not finished yet?
Correct. These are some preliminary discussions that we have had with them.
That's all, that's all I have on that one.
I have a question about the sheriff's call taker. Between a 911 call taker, is a call taker, the call taker no longer takes 911 calls or?
It actually does not. And so one of the issues, this is an extra higher position that with all the staffing challenges we've had with dispatchers, we had put this in place several years ago. And the word 911 scares people off. They think that they're going to be taking these, you know, severe. And so we had the sheriff contact us at the beginning of budget and was talking about, can we drop 911? Because really, they're taking care of non-emergency calls.
I could see.
I asked the same question, especially after seeing that how the dispatchers were.
Yes.
Sorry, it's incredible work that they do.
And by taking care of these, these other calls that are not true emergencies, it frees the dispatchers up to take care of the emergency calls. And we're hoping to also have kind of this career where the nine, the call takers gain experience, and then we can get them to apply for dispatcher. So that's also a plan.
Other questions from the board? We're to give direction, so you bring back a final budget at our next meeting? Is that correct?
We will bring it back, yes, at the next meeting for approval.
Does anybody have any further changes? Nancy, do you have anything you want to add before we close this hearing?
No, I just want to thank Marcus and Denise. The amount of work that goes into this budget, as you can see, it's very large. It's incredible, the amount of work that they do in such a short amount of time. And so I just want to thank them for their efforts because they do a fantastic job. So thank you both.
I'd like to add that, you know, we're against the total budget. We're at less than 1% structural deficit. That's pretty good.
Just one more, if I could jump in. One more thing, in order to be compliant with the Budget Act, we do have to show a spreadsheet of the recommended changes. So I have Denise's over here typing on it, trying to, so we can put it on the screen. All right, now I think she has two more lines, and then we'll be all set here.
With this, we've done everything by the book?
Everything's by the book once. We type in a couple more lines, yes.
Absolutely.
It's a big one right there. A bunch of old, first half of its policies.
And so on the screen is, is the two adjustments that we made. The one for the archives, which is at the very top, that's the $111,000. And then TOT is the $72,000 that we will be truing up to fire. And then below that is the five line answers that I mentioned. We had some technical adjustments to take care of.
All right, is there any other comments from the board before we close? Supervisor Toffenelli?
Thank you. I want to say thank you to the staff and department heads and everybody. I remember years ago, and Barbara probably remembers, when we went through a budget, as part of the budget, we'd be in the Sierra Room, because it would be overflowing in almost every department head. Sheriff Downham would spend all day on the budget, just for him. So we would be there for two or three days, and every department head would come up. So it's come a long ways. I want to thank everybody for just putting in on this and getting through it. It's the budget. You know, we only have so many dollars to go, but I think it's great that everybody was involved in this. And thank you all.
All right. What a good place to end this hearing. I'm closing the public hearing. And are you, is there no further direction needed by your team?
No further direction, just one last caveat. When we make these changes, if there's a behind-the-scenes change that needs to make, we'll also make that. But those are technical in nature, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Marcus. Thank you very much, Teresa and Denise.
Thank you so much.
All right, move on to supervisor announcements.
In compliance with government code. Sorry.
I was going to say thank you.
I'm sorry, mine.
In compliance with government code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Supervisor Albert, do you want to be, and you had something you wanted to?
I just wanted to jump on the back end, which, sorry, of what Supervisor Toffenelli was saying as the grand poopa. I am the newbie, and I just wanted to thank you so much for the time and attention that you do give us before the actual hearing to explain, so. Thank you. And with that, I will say, I attended the CSCSA with Supervisor Toffenelli yesterday, and that was all I need to report.
Supervisor, supervisor Stoppard? I know, I'm changing it out.
I want to, the COG meeting for Ms. Follendorf. And I reported out that Ms. Follendorf's doing as well as possible, all things considered. So thank you, Ms. Follendorf, for showing up today. That's all.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, I was contacted by someone that wanted to fund or redo our display, the county display at the Capitol, State Capitol. And I hadn't been there in a long time, but apparently there's remodel is being done in State Capitol. And so we didn't know where our display went, all the items in our display, because it's been a couple of years, apparently, that they took it out. Well, I contacted Martin, and he went there and took, got all of our stuff that was there that was, that was worth taking, apparently. There was some stuff missing, I say, but, but he does have some of it. And so my question was, and also I found out, we found out also from the state, that we may not be able, the counties may not be able to put their displays back in once the remodels are done. They're talking about just doing away with it. Kind of a little bit upset, because the counties are the state. We are the state. But that being said, had a discussion with Teresa and a little bit of discussion with Martin about taking some of those archives that we had there and maybe adding to it, and maybe doing our own display right out here where the garden is, right here. Maybe putting up a display, so when public comes in, we have some of the archives from our county here, gold pans, whatever, so we can have our own display here. I don't know how the board feels about it, but just a thought, because of not being able to display the State Capitol.
I'm pretty disappointed that they do that, too.
And we had such a great window, because it was right across from the governor's office. So the artifacts that were in there, there is a, for lack of better description, it was a, it's a puppet of Mark Twain, which actually scares a lot of people. I've got it in my office, because nobody at the Visitors Bureau wants to look at it. So if we do go back to the Capitol, I would love to talk about designing a new window. There were a few little artifacts and a lot of little frogs, because you used to be able to guess the number of frogs, contact Visitors Bureau, and if you were right, you got a T-shirt. Ultimately, a lot of those frogs, one had you, have been given away to kids. So there really isn't much left, because the backdrop was actually destroyed as we tried to take it out of the window. So that actually just the person at the Capitol threw it away for us. But I would love to be involved in helping with the display here. I think it's a brilliant idea. And again, I think there are enough artifacts at the county museum, at the HHS Camp Museum, that we could build something really fantastic.
The person that contacted me was willing to fund, if you go back to the State Capitol, willing to fund a complete display. So they would be paying for it, and we'd be doing a presentation, and so.
All right, if we can keep it in the Capitol, that's preferred.
Yeah.
But when that comes, when that comes due, I would support.
Should we write a letter? Is there possible that we could write a letter saying that we really would like to be back in the Capitol? Or?
We can do that, yeah.
So anybody opposed to sending a letter on that?
No, no, but I think maybe sending it to CSAC and having every county.
RCRC, too.
And RCRC and have them all speak up also. I think multiple letters and get our partners in other counties to speak up also.
That's a good idea, because I hadn't heard any of this.
No.
We'll just bring, yeah, we can bring that back in a future.
Bring it back, let's bring it back in a letter, and let's copy our associations so that it could go out and pick it up, and we'll, and I'll bring it up in RCRC and you can bring it up in CSAC.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Gary.
Yep. The other, one other thing, Halloween's coming up. And I was trying to get Stacy to give us any idea of what their theme is over in the Elections Department and Clerk's Office this year, but she's not giving it up. So my question is, we put on a big display last year, and we had a tremendous amount of food that we transferred to the Resource Connection. Is everybody on board to doing the same thing this year?
Gary, if you lead, I will, more than that. All right.
You're on.
All right. Gary, you got the ball. Supervisor Follendorf?
I don't have anything to report.
I do like, I did like seeing that little baby hand come up there a little bit.
[inaudible]
Asking to speak. Ah, do I get to take a look?
She's sleeping.
Oh, she's blurred.
Awesome, Amanda, awesome.
All right, the only thing I have to report is I was in
Okay, that was it.
Thank you, Amanda. I have to report is I was in Siskiyou County for a San Nevada Conservancy meeting and RCRC meetings last week down in Sacramento, and Golden State Connect meeting, so indirectly, Costin County. Very well, if there's anything else to report, Madam CEO? Nope, Madam Counsel?
Hello?
Thank you very much, we stand adjourned. We will be going into closed session after this for a brief meeting.
We'll report out next meeting.